The Records Commission is hereby called to order. And, Mr. Wilson, will you take attendance?
Ms. Jisling?
Present.
Mr. Porter?
Present.
Mr. Wilson, present.
We have to approve to amend the previously adopted schedule of records retention and disposal. And we need a motion to do so.
I can make a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Porter made the motion. Can you, can I second? I will second.
And just to clarify, the Ohio Revised Code requires, by virtue of the positions, that the three of us serve as the Records Commission, the Board President, Superintendent, and Treasurer, were also required to maintain a records retention schedule for all documents under control of the Board of Education. We, as with almost all school districts and local governments, comply with the Ohio Historical Society's recommend guidelines on retention. Periodically, they will update that. There are a few minor changes that are being presented tonight so that we conform with their current retention schedule. This is for paper documents only. The electronic versions do not have a disposal date. We retain those longer than required, but this is for paper documents. So with this action tonight, we'll file it with the proper regulatory authorities and move forward.
What was very helpful, too, is with the transition to electronic documents, the possibility of storage and off-site storage to protect the integrity of our records indefinitely is, is a wonderful addition to our skillset. And after witnessing our sister district, Willabees, like dreadful fire of their Board of Education building, it gave us an opportunity to revisit and make sure that we are up to some.
Yes, we have reviewed the documents we store in our building to ensure they're either in the fireproof vault, those are sensitive, or in electronic form that are stored both in our building and at our hot site, as well as some are housed on our host company's site, so that we believe we have full protection. We have begun to do site visits to every one of our facilities we operate to review the records retention at the building and departmental levels and help ensure we're in compliance both with, from a regulatory standpoint and from a safety standpoint. So we're reaching out and pleased to report that while not perfect, we are in very good shape throughout the district.
And I thought it was interesting when you said we do get occasional records requests for some, many decades old records.
Oh, yes. Yes, we just recently got a records request for a student that attended the schools in 1941. We were able to find something.
Yes, just a test.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I need a roll call, please.
A roll call, please.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, hi.
And now, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second. And, Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, hi.
And we are adjourned. Good evening. The September 12, 2017 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331 3.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join me in a moment of silence for our student, Evan Bartley. Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the September 12, 2017 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this meeting, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the school district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 96.96 in Mentor, and Channel 96.22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on YouTube channel Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. And please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Ms. Jisling?
Present. We need a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting August 8th, regular meeting of the same date. Special meetings on August 12th and August 29th.
So moved.
Second.
And, Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address us this evening? To Mr. Porter for the Superintendent's Report and Recommendations.
Good evening, Madam President and Members of the Board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of Items 6A1 through 6A3.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I just have one correction. Under Number 1, the 12 T-shirts, it should be Sheila, S-H-E-I-L-A.
Thank you.
Ah, thank you, Mrs. Briner. And, Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes. And District Highlights Reports and Recommendations. Mr. Porter?
Thank you. Madam President and Members of the Board, I am happy to take a few minutes to give an opening of school update. We have enjoyed a very smooth start all the way around with a total of 7,563 students in attendance. We've been blessed by comfortable temperatures, and our staff and students have quickly turned their attention to the work at hand. A few things we can celebrate this year, including U.S. News and World report distinguishing Mentor High School as one of America's top high schools. A large part of that designation relates to our rising Advanced Placement scores, which we are very proud of. Also, in a few minutes tonight, we will be recognizing Brentmore Elementary as an Ohio Hall of Fame School, which is a real feather in their cap. Also, from kindergarten through 12th grade, for the first time, we are a full one-to-one device district. Students in high school continue to use MacBook Airs for their work. Middle schoolers are assigned iPads. Upper elementary students are working with Chromebooks, and our youngest students are using mini iPads. The variety of devices is strategic. As we recognize by the time our students leave Mentor, they will need to know how to use many different devices and platforms. It is also important to note that we are implementing the devices with fidelity, recognizing when it serves our best interest to use them, and also recognizing when other methods of teaching and learning work best. Also, this summer, I'm proud that our district was given the Regional Award from the National Food Allergy and Research Education Network for our work on allergy prevention in the district. As far as important initiatives worth mentioning tonight, as we look ahead to the rest of this school year, we will be completing our district's strategic plan by May of 2018 so that we may have a three-to-five-year roadmap of our most important goals in four areas of education, in four areas, including education, safety, resources, and community partnerships. Our Strategic Planning Committee will soon break into task forces for these four areas, and will meet throughout the year to turn the work already done by different stakeholder groups into these goals and action plans. The Resources Task Force will be on an accelerated timeline as its major initiative for the year will involve facilities work. This is the year to make decisions on how to best right-size our district, particularly as we look at schools that may be a bit crowded, some that are way under capacity, and the work even includes looking at our local school boundaries. The goal of the work is to make the best possible use of our taxpayer dollars, while also continuing to improve the quality of education Mentor provides. After the facilities work this fall, I plan to announce any upcoming changes by mid-year so that we may prepare for the implementation by the start of the 18-19 school year. This will position our buildings, our students, and staff for success over the next several years while remaining fiscally responsible. As we head into the fall, I'm excited by what the next several months have in store for us, and it's hard not to recognize the tremendous momentum in Mentor schools. Our goal is to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, we have Mr. Fetic.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board of Education, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to share some great news about Mentor High School. Tonight, I am proud to announce that Mrs. Patricia Tilarchik has won the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics District Secondary Teacher Award. Patty is being recognized because of her sound instructional practices, her ability to demonstrate success with students of various ability levels, and her strength at implementing building-level initiatives. Her latest endeavor has Patty teaching the AP Research Course at Mentor High School. This is part of the prestigious AP Capstone Program offered to students by the College Board. This rigorous teaching assignment requires her to work in a cross-curricular setting and focus on the tenets of the research process. Above all else, Patty never hesitates to put her students first. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Patty Tilarchik, Ohio Teacher of Mathematics Award winner.
At this time, Mr. Hammond, along with Mrs. Jisling, will recognize Brentmore Elementary School teacher Nancy Trace.
Good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. Each year, the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics, or OCTM, recognizes outstanding teachers, professors, emerging leaders, and friends of mathematics. This past school year, Mrs. Pam Hutto, Principal at Brentmore Elementary, nominated fourth-grade teacher Nancy Trace for the 2017 OCTM Elementary Teacher Award for the Northeast District. Nancy was selected for this honor based on her creativity and her ability to take students struggling in math to higher levels than anyone ever expected. And she won't take credit for this. I know she won't. Nancy will attend OCTM's Awards Banquet on Thursday, October the 19th, 2017, at the Columbus Convention Center and receive her award during OCTM's annual conference. It's my honor to publicly thank Nancy for her outstanding hard work and her dedication to the students at Brentmore Elementary. Congratulations, Nancy.
And at this time, Mr. Hammond, along with Mrs. Jisling, will recognize Brentmore Elementary School staff for their prestigious Hall of Fame School Award.
Once again, good evening, Madam President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. Exemplary educational programs that go above and beyond meeting the needs of students in elementary and middle-level schools across the state of Ohio are recognized annually through the OAESA Hall of Fame School Recognition Program. Of course, OAESA is, stands for the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators. The Hall of Fame School Award recognizes schools that engage faculty, students, and the community to provide a quality school experience. Last year, Mrs. Pam Hutto and the Brentmore staff collaboratively submitted an extensive application documenting the effectiveness of their educational program in several areas. The top schools that meet or exceed the rigorous qualification requirements were scheduled for an onsite visitation by members of OAESA's Hall of Fame Visitation Committee. As a result, Brentmore distinguished themselves above all others to earn this outstanding award. This evening, it is my honor and great pleasure to publicly recognize all members of the Brentmore staff as we celebrate their distinction as an OAESA Hall of Fame School winner. Congratulations, Brentmore. Now, before I begin, I'm going to ask Mrs. Hutto to come up and join me and congratulate her staff as they come through. Staff members, if you would, I'm going to call these off, not too fast, but I'll call them off quickly. We'll get you through so you can meet the board members, and we'll have you along the side over here. So, there may be a few, a couple staff members who aren't here, but I'm going to read everyone's name. Congratulations to the following. Sherri Ashton. Oh, by the way, please hold your applause until we're all done. Sherri, come on up. James Beck. Jenner Brazdevich. Jessica Carmona. Jill Connors. Daniela De Dante. Mary Ann Delariva. Dorian DiPease. Molly Dayak. Jenna Herzog. Kathy Kelly. Joe Kilpeck. Megan Kirby. Carrie Klein. Gina Koski. Emily Kowalski. Christina Malinowski. Pam Mitchell. Amanda Morgan. Valerie Nagy. Julie Norman. Kathy Olds. Kathy Pedley. Sarah Pacheco. Therese Providence. Justin Rapp. Kathleen Ricchetti. Caitlin Rogers. Catherine Romo. Katie Runyon. Ashley Rupert. Amber Sorick. Diane Shavoni. Mary Schlish. Megan Tompkins. Nancy Trace. Donald Euline. Linda Wallace. And John Weingard.
I gotta get out of this picture.
Smile, one, two. One more. Ready?
Don't.
Thank you so much.
Madam President and Members of the Board, we have two first readings this evening. We have Revised Policy 6.15 and Revised Policy 7.04. Because this is a first reading, no vote is necessary. Madam President and Members of the Board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1, Related to Certified Personnel, and Agenda Item C2 through C4, all related to Human Resource Matters.
So moved. Second.
And, Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
And then to you, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, under Board of Education Business, Item 1, as you know, for the second year, our Career Technical Education Program has purchased a home as a learning laboratory for our students to improve their construction and remodeling skills. Last year, our first year, we were able to sell the house at the end of the academic term through the state-required auction process. This year, we conducted an auction and did not receive any bids for the home. Our next step is to request that you authorize the Superintendent and I to engage the services of a real estate agent for the purposes of selling the home. Proceeds will go into a fund that will fund the purchase of this year's home that we're just today received word that we've had an acceptance of our offer for a home that's located at 6184 Melden Road. So we will use these proceeds towards that and funding the third-year experience for our students. So please consider authorizing us to engage a real estate agent for the purposes of selling the existing home on John and Kate Ridge Road.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And, Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes. The program has been just an outstanding opportunity for students, and everybody who's seen the homes, both of them that were completed, I think were dazzled by the fine workmanship and the nice improvements made to that property. So thank you so much. And on to Mrs. Briner, please.
Okay. I'm very happy to say that we had 10 excellent applications this year for our Mentor Board of Education Scholarship. And just for informational purposes, the applications are judged based on academics, character, and leadership, teacher or guidance counselor recommendation, extracurricular activities, and community service, and financial need. And this year, the board awarded two scholarships in the amount of $300 each, and those went to Kyle Keery, who plans to study medicine and is currently attending the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and Lav Patel, who is studying biochemistry at the Ohio State University. On behalf of the school board, I would like to wish these fine young men the best of luck in their future endeavors, and thank you to everyone who has contributed to the scholarship.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Briner. And then to you, Mr. Wilson.
I believe we have a legislative report this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Tuttle.
That's quite all right. This is one of the largest audiences we've had for this end of the meeting. I'm not shy to talk. Just really, one issue on that legislative report, I just want to call to everyone's attention, and I believe it applies to us. If it doesn't, Mr. Wilson, please tell me. That's House Bill 310, Representative Vitale, Republican for Urbana, to permit an elected office holder of this state or a political subdivision of this state who holds a concealed handgun license to carry a concealed handgun in a government facility of this state or a political subdivision of this state. I assume that applies to public schools, Mr. Wilson? Correct. The Ohio Revised Code identifies us as a political subdivision, so that does include K-12 school districts throughout the state. So what I'm asking all of you who have any, one way or the other, that you lean, I'm not going to ask you to raise your hands, but please express your opposition to this, if I would ask that. I mean, I'm not telling you to do it, but if you are opposed to it, please send those letters. You can start by sending to Rep. Vitale. Also, our local reps, Ron Young. Please do that. Express your opposition if you're for it. If you want to do that as well, that's up to you. I'm not telling you not to. But I think we, well, I'm not going to get into it, but that's what I wanted to point out in the report. Anything else? I have nothing else on there that I want to talk about. Bullet points, that's a major bullet point there. Take a copy. I think we have them available for distribution. If we don't, his name is U-R-B-A-N-A, and that's House Bill 310. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
You're welcome.
And to you, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, thank you. I'd recommend the Board of Education approve the financial statements for the month of August 2017 in order they be placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second. We're still operating on our temporary budget. We'll approve a final budget later this month, so the statements are normal for the second month of the fiscal year, and the variances are against the temporary budget rather than the full budget, so it'll be more meaningful when we present the September financials.
Dan, one question. Are we experiencing an increase or a greater return on our investments?
Yes. We, as I communicated to the board periodically, I revisit all of our consulting relationships for the fiscal management of the district. And as a result of a second acquisition of the company that I began to use shortly after joining the district, I determined to change our investment advisors, the First National Bank. They have a more active management style that still complies with our board policies and state laws, and also are building a nice book of business in the local sector. We anticipate that we will see an increase in earnings, both from our new investment advisor, from our current cash balances, particularly now this time of year with having received the second-half real estate tax settlement. And rates are still extremely low compared to pre-Great Recession, but are gradually improving, and we're trying to ladder out a little bit more in the future. So we're very hopeful that we can produce additional non-tax revenues for the district. But I would point out, before the Great Recession, we were earning over $2 million a year in investment income. We are now earning less than $1.5 million a year with similar and actually slightly better cash reserves and cash flow solely attributed to the difference in interest rates. So we are still feeling the effects in our district from the extremely slow recovery from the Great Recession, and are very concerned that many economists are saying we're nearing the end of this cycle, and a new recession may be on the horizon, which, again, would have a very negative impact on our earnings. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And will you call the roll?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. [inaudible]. for the month of August 2017.
So moved.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve the interfund transfers listed in Exhibit 7-D-C.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
Yes. So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve certain invoices presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve certain invoices presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it's recommended the Board of Education approve certain invoices presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
And it completes my items tonight.
And we have two items of new business.
Yes, if you'd like, the Mentor on the Lake City Council has enacted legislation that has been approved by the county and the state of Ohio to create a commercial reinvestment area. And one of the regulations for that is that annually, a board be convened to review granted tax abatements from the CRA area to ensure compliance with the regulations and expectations presented when an abatement is approved. The state law and county commissioners require that one Board of Education member represent the school district on this council, so we're asking that the Board tonight designate someone for this responsibility.
Mr. Tuttle, would you be willing?
I'd love to.
Or you wanted to have to?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle. Thank you. Mr. Tuttle?
Thank you.
And the second item is, recently, Mr. Shaw asked us to investigate and make a recommendation on converting to a consent agenda format for the financial section of the Board of Education report. We've looked at the history of how we've done this, we've looked at the Ohio Revised Code and auditor regulations, and believe it's certainly within the rules and regulations to create a consent agenda item that will consolidate the actions, but still give me the opportunity to point out any variances or unexpected activities in any of those areas. So we are recommending that the Board go forward with a consent agenda item that would include financial statements, ratification of investments, interfund transfers and advances, appropriation modifications, supplemental appropriations, student activities, and payment of invoices. Things such as adopting the annual budget, or the five-year forecast, or the depository designations, or other non-routine items would still be presented as separate items for Board consideration. So no vote is needed, but if the Board is comfortable with us moving forward, we'll implement this next month, and we'll verify whether or not the Board of Education policy needs updated, the one that regulates Board agendas. Just asking for consent.
Will we be still getting the same information?
Yes.
It'll just be condensed?
Correct. It would be one vote to approve all but the exact same information and supporting documentation.
And I might say, if there's ever any question, an item can be pulled from the consent agenda and handled separately.
Yes.
Excellent. Makes sense, too.
Thank you for that.
Then we will begin to do that with our October meeting, and again, verify whether or not any revisions required with our Board of Education policies. Thank you. That completes the new business items.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And our second hearing of the public on agenda or non-agenda items, if anybody had anything they'd like to share. Does that appear so? I don't believe we have any executive session need. Therefore, we may call for an adjournment?
So moved.
And Mr. Wilson, will you take the roll?
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?